Okay, perfect. So let me pin you, Manvier, before we get um started.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly. Um, so uh again, your two minutes will start when you're ready for your introductory statement. And Angelo will be keeping time for you in chat. Uh feel free to start when you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So first of all, good after good uh good evening to everybody. Uh happy Friday. Good evening and thank you to the Young Dems for organizing this today. A quick backstory on me. I've been a young Dem and Dem since I was eighteen years old, since I can vote. Uh my path in democratic politics really began when I volunteered for um Secretary Clinton, when she ran for president in twenty sixteen. And then when I was also volunteering at that time, also Congressman Gerendy's campaign for reelection. In twenty seventeen, I was a student at Napa Valley College and I helped them spin up their Napa Valley Young Dems chapter, which I'm proud to say still exists. And at that time, had a chance to attend multiple conferences for the Democratic Party down in San Diego, Sacramento over the years. And build a really good network uh inside the Democratic Party in California. In twenty eighteen, I ran for public office uh outside of uh my college work that I did in the city of Fairfield. At that time, I was twenty twenty years old, by far the youngest young Dem in that race. Earning me, I earned about ten thousand votes in that election, which is about twenty percent of the vote. Following that, I joined the Air Force Reserve. And when I came back from training, I ran for school board, where I've had the privilege of serving as a school board member in Salona County for the past four years. Uh when I won that election in twenty twenty, I was the youngest uh elected official and youngest young Dem elected at the time. And I've been doing that now for the past four years. And I'm running for city council now in the city of Fairfield, where I've lived now for over twenty years. I really because of some of the issues we're facing that I've faced on the school board. And because uh some of the issues that I've faced in my region growing up, some of those entail um building out some of our infrastructure projects. That includes building up things like Markley Lane, uh expanding Peabody hopefully as well. And then locally diversifying our economy here. Some of our biggest employers are public entities, which is a good, but to grow this region. We really need to bring in some new industries here, and I think sectors like aerospace and defense, biotech and ag tech are well suited for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Manvier. Perfect timing. Uh so we'll start your question and answer portion, and we'll start with your first question. And for everyone's reference, we're gonna put the question uh for you in the chat for your reference as well. Um but the first question is, what steps will you take to ensure that the voices of young people are heard? And value in the political decision making process, and your time will start uh when you start your response.
Sure. So the first one is uh. I wanna emphasize, I am a young person. So a lot of these people that you're talking about are the kids I grew up with. I went to high school with, middle school with, elementary school with. And um the district that I live in, a lot of these folks I've known essentially my entire life. And being involved with organizations like the Solana County Young Dems for the past few years um. And being on the school board, which has given me a really great chance to connect with a lot of young folks. I think I've developed a really good network. Uh to make sure that I have a good way to be accessible as well and to be to help to have to be able to listen to them. So. Between those two things at the very beginning, I think I'm well situated to ensure that young folks' voices are heard. Uh in regards to being accessible, for example, um multiple ways to reach out to me via email, phone number, texting. It's all available online to reach out to me. So I'd like to be as accessible as possible. I guess to turn it back to you, Jacob, do you have any uh specific questions in regards to that? Like, how else would you like me to answer that?
Um, no, no, no specifics. Uh but Angelo, um can we get the time remaining? Okay.
I think I don't really need the full five minutes for this answer, because I feel like as a young person, I'm there's nothing else that I could do more than I identify quite personally with this group of people. On the campaign side, I think the best thing I can do is make sure I'm electable and that I can win, because I think the best way to ensure that. Young folks' voices are heard is to ensure that there's representation representation on the council. Uh we often talk about uh diversity when it comes to race, which is an important topic. But what's not often talked about as much really is diversity of age. And I think what we're beginning to see in California and across the country are younger folks getting elected. So for me to ensure that I'm electable, that our voices as a young young audience are heard. Uh what I've done over the past six years really ensure my name recognition has increased. So since my first council run, being able to run again and getting elected, uh started the local podcast years ago. And continued to remain active with multiple organization at the local level. Uh with multiple different nonprofits, I think all that has ensured that I can have a strong campaign. Um pleased to announce that I think I was the first person in my race to have public signs out in the community. Ensuring that there is not just name recognition and visual recognition with my name. And uh when it comes to the campaign side, uh to ensure that I win, I've had a really good ground game and I've been canvassing quite strongly uh in my area. To ensure that I'm hitting the homes, uh going door to door and targeting the houses that I wanna hit. So I think doing all that will ensure that young folks' voices are heard, because I think part of that is ensuring that I can ensure that I'm elected. Because that is one of the best, because I think that I can uh represent these young voices. So I think my kind of my response uh will end there.
Okay, we'll move to the next question. Angelo, what's the remaining time for the question and answer portion? So the second question is, how do you plan to attract and retain businesses that provide job opportunities for young professionals?
Yeah, so this is a great question. So when it comes to attracting businesses. Uh for the longest time, I think we've had a bit of an antiquated approach to business to economic development. Um like I said in the beginning, some of our largest employers here uh talk about. We have hospitals, uh the prison, uh education, school systems and the hospitals, and then obviously the base as well. These are some of our largest employers in the region, and that is a good way to ensure that you have a sustainable economy. But when you're talking about ensuring that there are future job opportunities for people, um that's not the way to go. Um a lot of my friends that I went to high school with don't really live local anymore. They live uh in Sacramento, maybe down in SF, down in LA, where they moved out of California completely. A lot of them moved to Texas, to New York, and really just because of opportunity. Our region is great uh to attract, I think, certain industries. Uh for example, I think. Jumping off of and kind of really working within collaboration strongly with Vacaville when it comes to biotech. I think Vacaville has really done a good job taking the lead in this county when it comes to pushing a new industry. Uh for the for the longest time, I think in Fairfield, we've really gone after um like the logistics sector quite strongly. Which is good when it comes to ensuring that land is not empty, but when you're talking about best use, uh I don't think that's the way to go. Because these logistic centers might provide jobs for sure, but a lot of the jobs are, these are folks I could be driving in. Uh and then, so when you're talking about retaining and attracting new ones, I think our region is really well situated to go after the aerospace and defense sector. Because of Travis Air Force Base, really. The other one is agriculture. One of our largest exports is the uh is uh between um food food and on the nut side and also on the meat side. Any of the innovation occurring in that sector is quite well situated be in Fairfield. Really, because we're well, we're between two tier one universities, between UC Berkeley and UC Davis. Now, I think when it comes to retaining businesses, I think that's a little hard. The reason I say that is because we are, in part, we're gonna be, that's gonna be dependent on state policies. Uh so I think we're gonna have to follow California's lead on how best to retain businesses, because it's gonna be very difficult for a city. Uh to remain competitive and when it comes to retaining businesses, especially when you're talking about uh larger ones that employ a lot of people.
Thank you so much, Manvier. Perfect timing. Uh we'll move now to your two minute uh closing statement, and your time will begin when you're ready.
Yep, thank you. So just to close out, I'm running for city council, really driven by a few key things. One, some of the problems we're facing on the school board, uh when it comes to ensuring that we have a safe uh school district. The area around Vanden High School, Golden West, Center Elementary, there's only two really, uh there's only two ingress and egress points. So when you're talking about mass evacuation, it's very difficult to do in that region, just because these are two small neighborhood roads. We need a third entrance and exit point. There's been a lot of conversation about Markley Lane, as many of you've heard. Uh we still have not found the full funding for it, and we're looking, we need to raise about two, maybe even three million dollars to but to complete that section of Markley Lane. That's so that I can connect a Peabody. That's needed for a safety reason. Uh to uh the other part on the safety side is uh the expansion of Peabody. I think a lot of us talk about it, but it hasn't been done yet. It sounds like a small issue, but when you're talking about eighty traffic being diverted every time there's a big fire. Uh trying to evacuate neighborhoods in Goldridge, Whitney, the base, uh all that traffic cannot be done. All that traffic can't be on Peabody. There's not enough space. And I think that's a really good opportunity for the city of Fairfield to collaborate with the county, with the metropolitan authority, the transportation authority. And then even at the state level as well, because that's a state priority. And the other thing on Peabody that, and this is a personal problem in a way that I've experienced growing up, and many of my friends and people I've grown up with have. As well as uh Peabody is very dark at night. We've had multiple people die on Peabody because it's just not safe. And that's also a joint collaborative effort, I think, between Fairfield, back of Oslo County, the other one being uh job opportunity, economic opportunity. I've uh, I grew up here, but I commute very far for work. I would like to see us, I'd like to be able to commute less, and I think I have a lot of folks in my age group that commute very far for work as well. And I think part of the solution to that is gonna be trying to attract new industries. And like I mentioned earlier, I think we're well situated to go after companies that are specializing in the sectors of agriculture, aerospace and defense, and biotechnology.
Thank you so much, Manvier. Um and just as for all the candidates, um after your interview, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. You don't have to stay for the entire meeting. Um. And also with regards to your question and answer portion, you'll have five minutes in total for your question and answer portion. So we have a lot of prepared questions. Um as per our email, we have, we are required to ask you two questions. So just be uh cognizant of that when answering uh and providing your responses. But thank you again, Manvier. Uh we will move now to Alonso. I believe you are here.
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. Let me pin you for everyone and then we'll get started. Okay, uh perfect. Uh so your two minutes will start when you're ready for your introductory statement.
Okay, well, um let me start by thanking you for this opportunity. This is my first time running for office, so I. Learning as I go. Uh as I mentioned, my name is Alonso Duarte. I am running for school board trustee, area one in Fairfield Sussoon uh Unified School District. I am a first generation Mexican immigrant and I have deep roots and family values. Um I understand firsthand the challenges faced by dual language learners. Like when I arrived to the US, I struggled to navigate the school while I was also working to support my family. And. We overcame all these obstacles, who were able to thrive. In following in my father's steps, I pursue education, higher education. So I achieved my PhD in human resource management and MBA in accounting, and that has allowed me to actually thrive. Uh my professional experience, aside from twenty seven years in retail. Uh includes teaching at Solano College, and I serve as the director of HR and fiscal for a local nonprofit that operates the Head Start programs. In Napa, Solano County. I am committed to give back to the community that has supported me and my family. My two daughters went to the local schools, graduated, and right now they're pursuing higher education. My son just started early college high school, so I'm deeply connected with the school, school district. Um with my educational background, financial acumen and community involvement, I think I am uniquely qualified to serve on the school board. And I believe my experiences will allow me to make a meaningful contribution to the district. And that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much, Alonso. Um we'll move now to your question and answer portion. Um and so we will start with your first question. Oh, I think there, oops. We'll add it to the chat as well. What is your stance on charter schools?
Well, while I think charter schools could bring some uniqueness. I think they take away from the budget and from the actual school district. So if we can find a way to continue to incorporate the. The option or the ability, basically what charter schools want to bring, kinda like we've done with PSA. Kinda like we're doing with the early uh college high school, I think I'm fine for that. But as an independent charter school away from the district, no, I I would not um support that.
Okay, thank you. Angelo, what's the remaining time? Okay, and we'll start with your second question. How will you ensure transparency and accountability in these decisions made by the school board?
Well, in in accounting, it's all about transparency. Um you cannot do financial reports without being transparent and being um honest about everything. So it's what is called as a full disclosure um principle. You have to tell everything. You have to give information to those who are gonna look at financial statements to be able to make decisions based on everything that's happened. Well, same thing would apply towards the public, towards the parents, towards the teachers. Decisions that are made on the school board should be able to be communicated um to um the stakeholders. People that are going to be affected by the decisions made at the school board. Yes, there may be things that are confidential that we cannot disclose. But there are ways to provide information as of what we're working on without necessarily disclosing anything that we cannot disclose out until a decision is made. So I think by having meetings and inviting the community to participate, listen in and ask questions. Being available to them to answer questions either via email or phone or text. Uh I think it would be a great way to communicate with the people within my area.
Okay, thank you so much. Angelo, the remaining time? Just over three minutes, we have a lot of questions. How will you plan to recruit, hire and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not negatively impacted?
Well, that's something I'm dealing with currently in my HR fiscal job. Because I, we operate twenty five schools, so there's a scarcity of teachers throughout the community. I'm already involved with Solano and with Napa uh trying to develop and grow our own teachers. We are actually reaching out to high schools. I'm talking with the principals at the early college high school. And I already have appointments with Fairfield High to be able to go meet with them and work in developing. Um or actually instilling the interest of teaching and education early on in high school. Uh students coming out of high school, they have no idea where they wanna go. They have idea of the jobs that are presented to them as lucrative, jobs that are like dream jobs. But not all of them understand that teaching is not just about the money. It's actually, it's a noble profession. It's about creating the future in helping the community through that process. Be able to instill and help mold it uh children into um. Useful uh members of the community is rather important. So starting up at high school, starting up also as far as eighth grade. Which we already attend a lot of meetings with eighth graders and teaching what it's like to be a teacher and get him involved. And have them come to our sites and view it. I think a similar approach at the school district would also work. Be in being able to invite people and young, young minds to see what it's like to be a teacher. And what is the effect that they have will probably instill into them pursuing that career.
Okay, thank you. Uh Angelo, is that the remaining time? Okay, perfect. Just under a minute and a half. Next question. How would you involve students, parents, teachers and the community in in decision making processes?
Uh the easiest way is to invite them to talk with us. Listen, having an open forum, question and answer, so we can actually hear what they have to say. Attend the board meetings of the different schools, listen to the concerns of the parents at that point. So we can hear directly from the different PTAs at the different schools. I can bring that to the board and then bring back to them to the same sort of meetings. And again, being accessible through email.
Thank you so much. Um Angelo, please put in the remaining time. Forty one seconds. Uh I think you can answer this question.
Okay.
What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students and schools?
Standardized testing does not belong in testing in schools. We are all different and is not equitable. Standardized test then is basically just a way of checking a box to say, oh, we did this. And teachers focus on teaching students on how to answer questions rather than how to think independently and how to grow. So I I don't like standardized tests. I never did.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't think we have enough time for another question. So we will move on to your closing statement. Again, you have two minutes and that time starts when you're ready.
Okay, well, as a parent of local children, uh I've witnessed firsthand the transformative power of education. As I mentioned, my daughter graduated, well, I haven't said where she graduated from. She graduated out of U C Merced. And now she's gonna pursue her masters in mental health. Uh I have extensive experience in finance. I have experience in education, and I think that coupled with my dedication to the community. Uh really qualifies me for the candidate as a candidate for the board. And I straddle the K through twelve education system. I have the early childhood education view and input through the uh Head Start program that I operate in and work at. And I, on the other hand, I'm at the college and I see the students that come out of high school in how well or how not well prepared they are. So I think being able to be on the board, I can influence that aspect and be able to get them from. Head start, getting them ready for school. And then actually getting them ready for college and getting them ready for life. High school is missing that step, getting people ready. To be, I mean, getting ready for life. So I believe I can make a difference in our schools. And the schools are essential for fostering and thriving the community, and I am committed to work tirelessly to ensure their success.
Okay, thank you so much, Alonso. Uh and I forgot to mention this at the outset. Um if you have any contact information, like an email or phone number, website, social media that you wanna share with us. Feel free to drop drop it in the chat after your interview. Uh we'd be happy to distribute that out to our membership so that they can uh contact you if they have additional questions. But thank you so much, Alonso, and thank you so much, uh Manvier, for going first and second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move now to our third candidate, uh Bridget Hunley. Let me spotlight you really quickly. I see you right here. Okay, uh Bridget, um uh I don't think I have to go over the process, but uh your two minutes start uh for your introductory statement when you're ready. You are muted. Bridget, you are muted. Bridget, you are still muted.
Trying to turn on the microphone. There we go.
There you go.
Can you hear me now? Good.
Yes.
Thank you, Solano County Young Democrats, for the opportunity to interview for your endorsement. I am running for TA area three for Fairfield Sussoon Board. Um I have been a tireless advocate for youth civic advocacy in the Democratic Party. I'm chair of the statewide California Democratic Party Caucus, in which I've sponsored and voted in favor of resolutions and bylaws. To encourage young people to be civically involved and encourage youth participation at the Democratic Party. I am personally running to make a difference in public education. I want to invest in students and families and work to ensure student voices are heard in board decisions. As a candidate, I'm working personally to include youth voices on my campaign. I'm a parent and the wife of a special education teacher and CTA member, and I'm asking for your endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. We'll move uh quickly to your question and answer portion. And again, that's five minutes in total. Uh so your first question is, how will you plan to recruit? Hire and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not negatively impacted, and your time starts when you start.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I plan to invest in employee compensation and teacher benefits. I plan to support the community schools program as uh supported by CTA for all students. And I personally oppose uh certificated and classified layoffs. I'd also want to invest in better healthcare. For our teachers to help retain and attract new teachers to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Angelo, uh the remaining time? Okay, perfect. We'll move to your uh next question. What is your stance on charter schools?
I can make that really quick. I am personally against charter schools. As the, again, the wife of the CTA teacher, I am personally against charter schools. I would not vote to support charter schools.
Thank you for your quick response. Move next to your next question. Angelo, the remaining time? How will you ensure transparency and accountability in the decisions made by the school board?
Excellent. Thank you so much, and that's a great question. So I personally believe in accountability and transparency. I would work with the students, the families, our union partners and community partners. To create a board that's actively going to listen and meet people where they're at. And I think that is key to having transparency on a board. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Angelo? How do you propose to ensure that schools in lower income areas receive equitable funding and resources?
That's also a great question. That's wonderful. Um so we're gonna work with grants and uh the community schools program with CTA. Um with a public-private partnership, make sure that all of our underserved areas receive equitable funding and resource. Where resources, because I feel that that's personally so important to making sure that we uh stop that uh school to prison pipeline. That we move forward with all of the charters that need to be happening right now, and by charters, I mean the Democratic Party charter. Um to make sure that we actually provide those resources to those lower income schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move to your next question while Angelo puts in um the time remaining. Here it is.
I get bonus questions.
How would you work to improve or expand support services such as counseling, tutoring and extracurricular activities?
I think that's a wonderful question too, and I think those are all so important. I think that we need to reach out and find funding and also work um with our new teachers and our incoming programs to provide funds for these programs. We need to do training uh to bring in uh new teachers and people who wanna become teachers like Paris, provide training programs for them. Um I think we need more counselors. We need new psychologists. Um the school psychologists union uh has obviously advocated for this as well. As the wife of a special education teacher, I can tell you we need more counseling. Um extracurricular activity is also very important, and that's also working with our outside community partners. To make sure that the resources are provided for that and that our students receive the resources that they need.
Okay, thank you. You're blazing through our questions. Uh next question. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students and schools?
Okay, this is another one that I'm gonna be brief with, because as the wife of a special education teacher, I come with the experience and uh. Uh time associated with this, um a reformer outlook on this, that I think standardized testing is outmoded and does not meet the needs of all of our students. And I believe it needs to be reformed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Angelo, the remaining time? Next question. Uh what metrics would you use to assess the success of schools in the district? And how would you hold schools accountable for student outcomes?
All right. Well, I think the metrics really depend on how each um, you know, student success varies based on the student. I don't think there's one way for every student. All students are different. They all learn differently. And I think you need to use that uh a broader outreach on that one. I think you need to understand that school accountability is based on how each student's needs are met, not based on standardized test scores. When our students' needs are met, we're succeeding.
Okay, thank you so much.
Basic answer for that one.
Angelo, the remaining time? Next question. How would you address potential overcrowding or under enrollment in certain schools within the district?
All right. So I think we need to make sure that our schools are um basically receiving um enough funding. First of all, to avoid some of these issues. Um I think that, you know, we have busing. I think that should be used as needed, obviously. Um but I think we shouldn't be having overcrowded schools. I think we need to provide, if we need more classrooms, we need to provide more classrooms. You know, there is, you know, the ability to do that, and we need to make sure no students are crammed into classrooms. I know even my husband is a special education teacher, has had to deal with this. Um and we need to make sure that students have the ratios that they need to succeed in the classroom, and I would personally advocate for that. Um, and we need to make sure that students have the ratios that they need to succeed in the classroom. And I would personally advocate for that.
Thank you so much. Angelo, the remaining time?
Student-teacher ratio.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question, how would you address the issue of learning loss, particularly in the aftermath of disruptions like the COVID-nineteen pandemic?
Of course. No, I think we need to provide resources, right? I think we need to provide, you know, uh, additional programming as needed. Um, our libraries need funding, right? To provide those additional after-school resources. We need to provide librarians, tutors. Um, but most importantly, we need to recruit and retain teachers that are, uh, have the ability to do this. Our teachers are our most valuable resource. And if we can recruit and retain more teachers for our districts, we will address that learning loss. Cause I know that our teachers every day in the classroom are working to remedy this, one-on-one with these students.
Okay, thank you so much. And I just got a message from one of our, our uh, members, um, and they wanted to ask the question. Oh, okay, you have thirty-eight seconds remaining. I just want, uh, so, well, hopefully this question will be quick. Um, how, what is, what is your thoughts on deferred maintenance?
Okay, so I believe maintenance should be deferred if it is an issue of um, personally dealing with, like, if it's a choice of firing teachers or deferring maintenance, I believe we should defer maintenance. I believe maintenance should be taken care of when we can afford it. But I believe if we don't have the funds and it's a choice of firing teachers or deferring maintenance, then I believe we should defer maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Uh, I do believe we do not have enough time for, yeah, we have fifteen seconds, so we'll move to your uh, closing statement. And again, that's two minutes and your time will start when you're ready.
Thank you very much. And thank you again for the opportunity to interview with you. It's one of my honors to have been um, one of the help, uh, people who helped to found this club many, many years ago. Um, and obviously I firmly believe in the Democratic Party and I believe in youth activism, activism within the party. Um, just earlier today, I flew back, actually. I was fortunate enough to attend and help to work on the Democratic National Convention in Chicago. And it was so inspiring there to see so many young diverse voices expressing their support for Kamala Harris, our presidential candidate. Um, as a personal candidate, I want to bring this enthusiasm for youth civic advocacy to the Fairfield Sassoon School Board. And I would be honored to earn your endorsement. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you so much, Bridget. Feel free to add uh, contact information into the chat as well as your website or social media if you have it available.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our next candidate, Audrey Jakes. I do believe she is here.
I am here, yes.
Perfect. Let me, let me pin you for everyone and we'll get started. Um, so your two minutes for uh, your uh, introductory statement will begin when you're ready.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate this opportunity very much, so um, I'm very grateful. Um, why am I running for school board? I am running for school board because teaching and education has been my life's work for thirty-six years. It is something that I absolutely love my job. And I am very passionate about education and I have very strong ties in this community because of the relationships that I've developed with students and families and my colleagues. Um, many years ago, I found a quote that I've carried with me for all of my life. It's from James Comer, and the quote is about relationships. Uh, the quote is, no significant learning occurs without a significant relationship. And I know that is true as a parent, as a teacher, as a support provider for beginning teachers, and as a organizer, I know it's about relationships. And so, I feel that I will be able to continue to serve my community as a trustee after I retire in December to build the relationships with our staff and our constituents. And we have those relationships be built on trust, on respect and inclusion. We have a culture that we need to create, and we're gonna create that culture by asking questions and listening, listening, listen to all of our stakeholders. Culture that's healthy, that is built on trust and is supportive of everyone in our community. We need to find out what people value, what success looks like for them when we talk about students. And I, I believe that I am a person that can be part of that team of leaders that can bring that to our district.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Uh, just as a note, I don't know if it's uh, my side or your side, but you, you sound, uh, you're a little spotty with connections, so just wanted you to be cognizant of that. But we'll move to your um, five-minute um, question and answer portion, and we'll start with your first question. How will you plan to recruit, hire and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not negatively impacted?
So in Fairfield Sassoon, we um, hire between a hundred and eighty and two hundred new teachers every single year. And I don't know of anyone that went into education for the money. It is a calling. Um, it's very much something that you feel deep in your soul. And so, people don't go into education thinking about salary so much as they think about how can I positively affect the future. So to maintain staff here, we need to look at our working conditions. And I believe that we need to see our teachers as experts in the field. They need to be involved in decision-making and included in that shared decision-making about what works best for their students and what works best at their sites. Um, I think we need to trust and support that our teachers and, and encourage them to be creative and to be innovative. Teaching is much, is as much an art as it is a science. And for a very long time, over a decade, we have whittled away the pieces of being creative and saying, I know my students really well, and I think this will work. We've taken that away from teachers, and we need to return to that. So I think when teachers feel that they're part of decision-making, when they are valued for their expertise, we will be able to retain teachers here in our district. And we also need to make sure that we have community supports. So the school district could work with the city in terms of what do we have in place for new teachers, for beginning teachers? Um, how are we just supporting them with housing? Um, are there groups that they can join just to be able to, to know there's other people that are having their shared experience? So I think there's much that we can do to not only attract the highest quality teachers, but also keep those teachers here in Fairfield.
Thank you so much, Audrey. We'll move to your next question. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students and schools?
So, I'm, I'm echoing much of those that went before me. Um, standardized testing is outdated and it ostracizes an entire group of our students. Or a population of our students. I think it is, if it has to be used, it is one small measure. But it is not the whole picture. And we keep looking at it as if that standardized test score is the whole picture. It's not. And I've taught elementary and I've taught middle school. And I have worked really hard when I've worked with students, getting them prepared for standardized testing, helping them to feel relaxed, um, trying to relieve the pressure. But that can only do so much because human beings feel that pressure when you're being judged on one test, on one moment. Um, some people aren't great test takers. Some people need to be creative with their hands. Um, some people learn differently. So we really have to think about that standardized testing. Are we really meeting the needs of our students? I think it's something we need to look into. And as a board member, I very much would like to explore that.
Okay, thank you for your thoughtful response. We'll move to your next question. And you have uh, just under two minutes remaining for your question and answer portion. Uh, the next question is, how do you propose to ensure that schools in lower-income areas receive equitable funding and resources?
So, um, I have been on full-time release from my classroom for a few years on a grant from NEA and then CTA um, to organize for the union, but my first grant was, um, and the second is also involved with community schools. And so, very short uh, explanation of that. The whole idea behind community schools is that it is started in our, in our um, Title One schools in our um, historically underrepresented populations in schools. And what community schools does is it, it uh, it flips the, the decision-making from top-down to site-based and community-based. And it's based on, um, community schools is around four pillars. The most important pillar, though, is the shared decision-making. So at a community school, the school becomes the hub for the community. And we ask what is needed for that particular community. Because what might be happening at Anna Kyle is not what's gonna be happening at Cleo Gordon. Two different communities, two different needs. But on a community board, a community school steering board, it includes parents, students, teachers, community partners, uh, administration and management. But here is the thing, the decisions made at that steering committee, those are the, the decisions that guide the school. They're not taken away and changed. Those are the decisions that help to form that school, and that's the power of it. So bringing community schools to our underrepresented and our Title One schools is one way to address that, that issue.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Angelo, what's the remaining time left for Audrey? Fifteen seconds. We'll move to your closing statement. Uh, again, that's two minutes and your time starts when you're ready.
Well, again, I thank you very much for this opportunity. I know that um, there's a lot of people uh, in this meeting that are very passionate about what they're doing, and I, I'm very proud to be amongst them and to be counted as one. Um, I feel that I am very well qualified to be a trustee. I think that I will bring a tremendous amount of transparency to uh, the governing board. And I think that new leadership and a new board is going to help move Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District forward in a very positive way. And so I appreciate the time and thank you so much for considering me as your endorsed candidate.
Thank you so much, Audrey. Feel free to drop in your contact information to the chat as well as your social media and other ways that we can get ahold of you. Okay, um, we will now move to our next candidate. Uh, Pam Bertani, I believe she is in the room. Yes, there you are. Uh, there you are. Good evening, um. Again, you're, you'll have two minutes for your introductory statement, and that time will start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to interview with you today. I am currently serving my second term as Vice Mayor of the City of Fairfield. This is my third term on the Fairfield City Council and my first time running for District Four, which is currently represented by Councilmember Rick Vaccaro, who recently announced his retirement. And he is supporting my campaign for District Four this time around. In addition to my work on the city council, I'm a practicing California attorney with an emphasis in intellectual property and tax law. I am a gubernatorial appointee to the California Commission on Uniform State Laws, initially appointed by Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger and recently reappointed by Governor Gavin Newsom. I am a former biotechnology researcher at Bayer Pharmaceuticals in Emeryville and proudly a former AP Biology teacher at McLeymon's High School in Oakland, which is where I grew up. I'm running for reelection to the city council because now more than ever, leadership matters. And, and I mean that from the top of the ticket all the way down to our local elections in the city of Fairfield. Experienced leadership should be at the helm in the city of Fairfield in the coming years. I'm the only candidate in this race with a tr- proven track record of effective problem-solving, consistent community engagement, and most importantly, getting the job done. I am tackling the tough issues that matter in this community and in our neighborhoods, homelessness, affordable housing, and the looming budget deficit. I'm sure you've reviewed my questionnaire and I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you again for being engaged in this election.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bertani. We'll now move to your question and answer portion. Uh, we'll start with your first question. What steps will you take to ensure that the voices of young people are heard and valued in the political decision-making process? And again, you have five minutes and your time will start when you start your response.
The answer to that question is very simple. Relationships matter. And young voice, all voices, and especially young voices, need to have a safe place to, a safe space to have their voices heard uh, in city government. Um, of course, our youth commission, which I've championed and interviewed for and made appointments to over several years, um, it, it, it starts there. But you know, when times get tough, it, it really matters that city leaders open their doors and their hearts to the voices of young people. You know, we had a, we had a a trying and tough time back in twenty-twenty when some young voices uh, entered the uh, city council meetings um, around police brutality. And it was some controversial times, tough times, but you know what I did? I invited those young people to meet with me in my home, to let them know that, you know, i- i- it, it makes a difference to get down off of the dais and actually speak with people and more importantly, listen. And so, there's no one on the city council who's held more town hall meetings than me. And that's because, that's because at the city council meetings, that's not really the time for an involved discourse with people about important issues. You gotta get off the dais and talk to people, meet with them where they are, and hear and collaborate and solve problems together. So that's really my, uh, that's really my framework um, for young voices and all voices. I wanna talk to the people who wanna weigh in and help us solve problems together because, you know, this is a, city government is a team sport, and we work for the voters. We work for the residents. And we need to make sure that we're listening to our bosses in every decision that we make. And I'm proud to say, um, that my son this evening, Dylan Bertani, who just graduated from Cal State Dominguez Hills, is coaching his first um, football game as a football coach at Rodriguez High School, which is where he's teaching. So Dylan came back home to give back to this community that gave so much to him. So shout out to Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bertani. Angelo, could you put in the remaining time? Just over two and a half minutes. We will move to your next question. How do you plan to attract and retain businesses that provide job opportunities for young professionals?
To attract and retain, that, you know, that's a multifaceted question. You know, one of the biggest issues that this city of Fairfield and the county of Solano is facing right now is that of homelessness. And in order to retain the businesses that we have and attract new businesses, the city really has to have a handle on um, how we're gonna deal with homelessness, especially in light of the June twenty-twenty-four SCOTUS Supreme Court of the United States decision in Grants Pass, which has overruled the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and now gives cities the ability to enforce anti-camping ordinances. So the encampments are going away, but we need the leadership in place that knows how to not use this decision as a weapon to weaponize homelessness, but to use it as an incentive to provide people the services that they need to get them off of the streets. So we have to address homelessness effectively. And then we have to target specific sectors of businesses while we're supporting our existing infrastructure, i.e. the Sassoon Valley is beautiful. They are, they've created a real destination um, in the city of Fairfield where people get up and wanna go to Sassoon Valley to enjoy live music, entertainment, et cetera. And then we need to target specific sectors. Of course, defense logistics, um, materials and related activities, food manufacturing and processing, advanced manufacturing with an emphasis on industries that have a strong need for great water. Uh, because we've got great water, which Anheuser-Busch obviously knows. And of course, we have to target our biotechnology and agro-technology industries as well. Um, and showcase the resources that the city of Fairfield currently has in place to support uh, burgeoning and um, thriving business infrastructure.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bertani. Um, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bertani. Um, you have sixteen minutes remaining, so we'll we'll move straight to your um two-minute uh closing statement and your time will start when you're ready.
Thank you. Once again, young Democrats, thank you for taking the time to care about this election cycle. This is, this election cycle is gonna be one that goes down in the history books and what I'll leave you with is that people support what they help to create. A- and that really is the democratic model in a nutshell. You know, when people are engaged in the process, they have a safe space to voice their concerns to collaborate with leaders. That's how we solve problems. That's how we move the needle. And under my leadership, that is what I've done and that is what I'll continue to do to make sure that this democracy runs on the fuel that it needs, which is an informed electorate. Because when we have an informed and engaged electorate, we all win. So thank you once again. And um I appreciate your time and your energy and your efforts.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Bertani. Uh, feel free to drop in uh contact information, social media. We'll be happy to share that with our members.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move now to our next candidate. Um, let me see here on my list. It is Perry Polk. Mister Polk, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, perfect. Let me uh pin you for everyone and then we'll get started here. Um, okay, perfect. Uh, so your two-minute introductory statement will start when you're ready.
Very well. So the question is, why do I want to serve on the school board? Well, I enjoy being on the school board and I have been on the school board off and on for five years. Uh, this is a very critical time in the district. We need to elect the best qualified people. I bring a distinctive experience, training and education, and an understanding of school district operations. I've been What strengths do I bring as a board member? Throughout most of my life, I've been a coalition builder. The building, the board is made up and and will be made up of different personalities. We have to work together. And it takes a person with skills in decision-making and conflict management to reach cons- consensus and to allow the district to move forward. I bring those skills. I bring an experience in public decision-making. I've been on the city council, I've been on the school board, I've been on many, many committees and task forces uh in our community. My per- track record of analyzing and understanding the implications of of potential decisions is well-known. I study proposals, consider alternatives. I bring experience in dealing with the district budget. And I've experienced the best of times in the budgets and the worst of times in the budgets. I know how to read financial statements and I understand the complexity of the budget and from both from the administrator's perfect perspective and the board member's perspective. I bring experience in problem-solving with foundation in economics and finance. I bring an understanding of people. I bring a wider understanding of the motivations of people and their physical, cognitive, moral and spiritual makeup. And I bring a lifelong experience of public service. That's who I am. I've I'm dedicated to
Thank you so much, Mister Polk. We'll now move to your five-minute question and answer portion. And we'll start with your first question. I'll also put it in chat. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students in schools?
You know, one of the terrible things that we're we're uh faced with is having to justify both to a different governmental levels and also the general public on how we're doing. And the way we've just it's been decided, not we have been decided, but it's had been decided as used to standardized tests. Standardized test gives you kind of a thumbnail look at how things are going. Unfortunately, we're being judged on those standard de- standardized tests. And we don't perform on those standardized tests and we get penalized. It's simple as that. People look bad. We look at us poorly if we do bad on standardized tests. There isn't any doubt whatsoever that standardized tests do not measure how the uh child is understanding what they're trying to learn. There isn't any doubt about that. Only the teacher in the classroom knows that. Only the teacher in the classroom can judge that. But that doesn't convince the rest of the public that's how we're doing. Uh, we have to prove that's happening. I don't like standard- standardized tests, especially the ones that we've been used. We tinkered with those over our whole state has tinkered with these so over the years. We're stuck with them. We have to use them. And we probably are gonna continue to improve them. Uh, everybody agrees that they don't measure properly. But at the same time, that's why we're being judged on. We have to use them, improve them, and rely actually on the learning that's taking place in the classroom as our judge of how things are going, not standardized tests or are judging. But the public sees them. The public is exempt. We have to stick with them.
Thank you so much, Trustee Polk. Um, Angela, what is the remaining time for the question and answer portion? Just under three minutes, so we'll move to your next question. Uh, what is your stance on charter schools?
When charter schools were first invented or came to California, I should say, they were without any question but gift of public funds. We were giving money away from school district monies. Yeah, revenues to charter schools to operate private schools with teachers that were not qualified. I am dead set against charter charter schools. One of the good things about Fairfield Sassoon is that quite a few years ago uh we invented charter schools within our school district. We have created schools that have special purposes. The 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 perfect example of that is the Public Safety Academy. Public Safety Academy idea came from a pu- a charter school in in uh San Bernardino, which has now ceased to exist. Our charter school, our pr- Public Safety Academy became a public charter school, one that we've created. And we've done that, replicated that in other cases. Matt Garcia is a is a another special school that we have. So we did our own charter schools, so to speak, under the, under the district's control. We then were able to you allocate resources to those within our own resources, within our own community. We didn't have to give money away to to schools in other places. Our our approach to charter schools is totally different from Vacaville. And Vacaville has subdued as to chosen to use charter schools um because they had no other alternative. We had the alternatives.
Hey, thank you, Trustee Polk. Uh, we'll move now to your uh next question. You have one minute remaining, just as a reminder. How do you propose to ensure that schools in lower-income areas receive equitable funding and resources?
One of the things that's happening and we haven't heard this from other people. Um, in fact, lower-income sco- uh areas do receive equitable funding. There may not be perceived as equitable funding. One of the things that we need to do is to make sure that wealthy areas, wealthy schools don't get too much. Right now, the the Title One program and other programs that we we receive through grants level off the the funding for schools. And that's happening. And we're seeing good results from that. Some of the schools that are in lower-income areas are doing wonderfully. The parents love them because they're succeeding in what they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you again, Trustee Polk. Uh, perfect timing. Uh, we'll ma- we'll now move to your closing statement. And as a reminder, you have two minutes and your two minutes will start when you're ready.
Thank I'm the only candidate in this trustee area that has served in this position. I'm concluding my fifth year on a school board. Uh, I was on four years, ten years ago, and now a year this 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 type sequence. In my previous term, I served as the president of the board and I hired and renegotiated the contract for our superintendent. During that time, we had to make severe budget uh cuts, including changes in curriculum and closing schools. It was a terrible time. No other candidates has had to make these kinds of decisions. I spent eighteen and a half years as an administrator, a classified director in another school district, which is a third larger than Fairfield Sassoon. I've consulted with FICMAT uh in helping them examine other districts and how they can improve. No other candidate has had that kind of experience. I've joined the present board with some degree of dis- uh uh dissension. And I've assisted in calming the atmosphere and facilitating um and cooperative uh action. I want to comment one more thing. Uh, one of the greatest days of my life was when I was allowed to vote for the first time. That was in the days when we had to be twenty-one to vote. And in my state, Texas, where I came from, you had to pay a poll tax to vote. That was one of my proudest days, to pay that poll tax and vote for the first time. And I want to encourage young people to exercise that vote. That's how we do our things in America.
Thank you so much, Trustee Polk. Perfect timing on that. Uh, again, feel free to drop in your contact information. So if our members have any additional questions, they may uh reach out to you. Um, but thank you again for uh taking the time to interview. We will now move to our next candidate, uh Suzanne Murphy. I believe uh she is here.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, let me pin you really quickly for everyone, then we'll get started. Okay, perfect. Uh, so just as a reminder, you have two minutes for your introductory statement and uh your two minutes will begin uh when you're ready.
All right, good evening. Uh, my name is Suzanne Murphy and I am running for Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District School Board, trustee area two. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be here and seeking your endorsement. Um, I wanted to kind of talk about my experience and why I think that it would be beneficial on the school board. One is a parent of three children that went through elementary, middle and high school through the Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District. I have been a member of the Fairfield community for thr- thirty years. And my professional experience spans twenty years in education as a teacher, a college professor, a coordinator and a director. And I want to ex- explain how my professional experience also aligns with the democratic values. In my role as a teacher, I've always taught in career education programs. I have taught in adult schools mainly, and I really have served. Those are underserved in our communities. I've taught at Community College, where I've taught in Business and Computer Studies for Napa Valley College. And I also was a technical assistance provider for a career technical education incentive grant. And my current role is Director of Ad- Adult Education and Indian Education. I have a Title VI Native American grant that serves three different school districts, Mount Diablo, Martinez and John Swett, where I make sure that Native American students in the program have academic support and also have access to cultural activities. In my role as an adult education um director, I actually serve seven apprenticeship programs through this through the Bay Area. I make sure that they have the funding they need to support their apprenticeship programs and I'm the education entity to support them as well. I support um my teachers in the school that I work with and I really feel that my expertise could could be very beneficial in Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Perfect timing, perfect timing. We'll now move to your five-minute question and answer portion. And we'll start with your first question. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students in schools?
So standardized test- standardized testing and all is a measure in a moment of time to see how a student is doing. Um, it's not a great measurement. Um, some people are good test takers. It really is um not equitable. Um, we know that, but I think as another candidate mentioned, it is how schools are measured currently. I do believe that standardized tests are not the way to measure student success. There should be multiple measures and I love that as we're moving as a state, we're looking at not only um you know, academic readiness but career readiness. We're moving in that way. Um, I'm hoping that we don't use testing as the sole reason to put value in a school and what they're doing or value in how well a teacher is doing because it's really wrong. But we, that's how the public views the school and how they're doing and that's how the state has kind of mandated things. But I think we can bring about change and I think change can come from good school boards that recognize this and support you know, multiple measures when we're looking at schools and and how our students are doing. And so um as standardized testing, I don't think will ever completely go away. I believe that we can move in directions that allow us to look at multiple measures when we're we're just, when we're kind of evaluating our effectiveness as teachers and as um school districts.
Thank you so much. Angela, what is the remaining time? Hey, just as a reminder, you have uh just under uh three and a half minutes. Your next question, what is your stance on charter schools?
So um charter schools exist, you know, and and they were there because I feel like people were looking for alternatives in their public school systems. Uh, my chance on started, my stance on charter schools is I want our public schools to be where people want to stay. I want our current school system, FSUSD, to be where people want to keep their students. And we do have opportunities within our school systems. We've got the Dual Immersion Program. We have the PSA Public Safety Academy, Matt Garcia. We've got some magnet programs throughout our schools. And so I think if we strengthen things that people are looking for within the current schools, charter schools won't even be a question. I'm not for them, but what I am for is creating those opportunities within our current schools that that support students and support, support students in all areas and support the diversity of students so that they have those opportunities and staying within FSUSD, that charter schools don't come in because people are being provided with what they need in the current system. And we do have a lot of positive things in FSUSD, but I think we can do more. So my thing is I am really for keeping um everything within the current school district, keeping the funding there, but really listening to our school community. What do we need to serve every single student and what do, what does that mean? What do we need to create within the structures we have to support every student and every student's needs?
Thank you so much, Suzanne, for that thoughtful response. Angela, can you put in the remaining time? Just shy of two minutes. Uh, your next question, how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the decisions made by the school board?
So um that that's great. And um being someone who has been in a director's role and I manage many grants, I'm very familiar with federal and state guidelines and financing and where money can be spent. Um, one of the things I think would be that I would speak to those things as a board member and as things come up. I have that in my background that that I know how to read, you know, fiscal reports and reports in the school district and where money is going. And I think that when it comes to the community, that the community needs to be aware that coming to a school board meeting, being present and being there, that's where their voice will be heard. I would encourage people to come and and make public comment and be there at meetings so that they know what's going on. In my own school district, I do board presentations and I invite all of my ESL students, second language learners, when I do a presentation. And we pack that boardroom because I tell them, this is your opportunity for your voice to be here, heard. If there's something that you don't like what's going on, you come here. And as a board member, I want to listen to those people that are coming and I want to and I want to listen to the emails that I will be receiving about what people need and to be very, very transparent and as to what's going on. And with my experience, I really believe that I can do that.
Again, thank you so much, Suzanne. Uh, I believe we are just shy of thirty, yeah, we're just shy of thirty seconds. So we'll move to, um, your, uh, closing statement. Again, you have two minutes, and your time starts when you're ready.
All right. Again, um, thank you so much for this opportunity. And I think I mentioned, I think my professional experience really is aligned with the democratic values. I really am in support of all students and creating equitable situations, especially for those that are underserved in our communities. I want to strengthen our, our school districts, um, partnerships with community-based organizations. There's a lot of things that community-based organizations can bring to schools, and having those partnerships, things that we may not be able to do as a district, those community-based organizations can help us. I really want to create safe environments for our students and our staff and our teachers. And I want to attract and retain the teachers that are here by really paying them what they deserve. They do the most important work here in our community. And I want to address the families in the communities and make sure the families are okay and the parents. Because when parents are doing better, their students are going to do better. So we really need to address the whole families. And, and I've heard other people talk to that as well. I think I can bring a lot to the board. I, I believe that my experience, um, working in several school districts across the Bay Area and just really being in different roles. And I really want to bring this, bring back to my community and serve in a way that I make things beneficial for all, students, teachers, parents, the whole community. And again, I'm thanking you very much for this opportunity. And, um, I know I have a few minutes remaining, but I think I have, I have brought everything forward that I feel needs to be said. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Suz- uh, Suzanne. Um, I appreciate you working with us, trying to get on. I know you had technical difficulties. Feel free to drop in, um, your, uh, e- uh, email, contact email, any website, social media. We'd be happy to share that with our members if they have additional questions. But thank you again for coming out to interview.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to, um, let's see, our next candidate, uh, Dr. Nicola Parr. I believe I saw them here.
I am here. Hello.
Perfect, perfect. Let me pin you for everyone. Um, and, uh, your two minutes for your introductory statement will start when you're ready.
Okay, well, good evening, and I appreciate this opportunity that has been afforded to me by the Solano Young Dems. Um, I am Dr. Nikki Parr, and I'm running for the Fairfield-Susun Unified School Board, area seven. And I want to take just a moment to talk a little bit about myself and my background and what brings me to, um, applying to, um, first, for this opportunity to apply for endorsement, but then also, most importantly, why I'm running. Um, I am from Fairfield, proud Fairfield High graduate, um, and was raised in the area that I'm running. Um, my mother was a teacher at Grange Middle School, where I attended school. My dad was stationed at Travis Air Force Base and was there for pretty much his entire career um, while I was growing up and retired as a chief master sergeant from the Air Force. And I have deep ties to this community. I moved away for, um, college and grad school. And then when I decided that I wanted to start a family, I knew that I had to move back home. And so I moved back here with my husband, Terrell, and we are raising three children. And, um, my husband is a construction trades teacher for the Solano County Office of Education and a proud teacher, part of the, uh, the CTA. And, um, I just feel that, based on my experience, based on the love that I have for this community and my know-how, I am a phenomenal candidate for this seat. Um, I started off as a teacher. I taught for a number of years, been a director, and now senior director with Solano County Office of Education.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr. Uh, perfect timing on that as well. We'll now move into your, uh, five-minute question and answer portion. Um, and we'll start with your first question. What is your stance on charter schools?
Okay. Well, charter schools ha- I'm definitely deeply concerned about charter schools. And I want to make sure that we are making a distinction between independent and dependent charter schools. Independent charter schools, every time there is an application, that is staff time that's pulled away from the district to respond to that application. And also the oversight, the, um, students that it pulls away from the district, that is definitely a concern. Um, there are rules and regulations around how we do that response, um, how we follow through with the response from the, uh, charter petition. Um, and I feel that if we are doing and want a great job with ensuring that our current schools have all of the resources that families are interested in and need, and students need, that there will be less of a desire for those families to join, um, in a campaign for opening a new charter school. And they'll be less likely to want to even attend the current, uh, charter schools. In Fairfield-Susun, they've done a wonderful job with creating different types of schools that meet different interests of students, like the Public Safety Academy. And I had a son that attended there, the Dual Immersion Program. I had a s- a son that attended there as well. And I currently have a son that attends the Matt Garcia Center, uh, uh, sorry, Matt Garcia Academy. Um, so there's great opportunity to enhance our current schools that would then lessen the, the likelihood that a charter school would actually take root in our community.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr, for that response. We'll now move to your second question after Angela puts in the remaining time. Just shy of three and a half minutes. Uh, what role do you think standardized tests should play in evaluating students and schools?
I am, I mirror some of the other responses from other, um, individuals this evening. Standardized tests measure a small portion of what a student actually knows. I would love to see a focus on project-based learning, where students can actually work together in, in, in teams or in, with individual groups on projects where they can demonstrate their knowledge of the content in different ways. We know that students learn differently. Unfortunately, we have state mandates that require that we, um, administer standardized tests. And so that's something that we have to do as a district. And I would be proposing that we look at other measures as well.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr. Uh, we'll move to your next question after your remaining time is put in the chat. So you have two minutes, forty-one seconds remaining. And your next question is, how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the decisions made by the school board?
Communication, making sure that, um, I communicate to the community about decisions that are, um, made, about information that needs to get out into the community. And one of the things that I definitely want to do is ensure that we're using different tools and different resources to get that information out. Not every family has the opportunity to come and join a school board meeting and participate, or may not feel comfortable doing so. So providing resources, providing information to families in, um, ways that are easily attainable, such as going to them, providing opportunities for engagement in their communities and their community centers and their churches, um, that's one of the things that I would definitely be doing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr. We'll now move to your next question after your, uh, there you go, your remaining time, a minute and fifty-seven seconds. Uh, your next question, uh, is how would you involve students, parents, teachers, and the community in the decision-making processes?
Um, first and foremost, by having relationships with the community. Many times when we have reports that are due, or even the, the local control accountability plan process, we reach out at one time to get information. And if there's not trust and there's not a relationship, you're not going to necessarily get the information that you need to be able to make the best decisions. So ongoing communication, ongoing relationships, reaching out, not when reports are due, but just so that you can have a relationship with the community. Uh, making sure that when you, when I'm, I will make sure that when I'm reaching out to those families, that I am, um, ensuring that I have families that represent the diversity of our community. And so if there's only certain groups of families that are coming to events and, and, and availing themselves to the supports and to the information, I would want to know why, and I would do some specific targeted outreach to those communities so that they can come in and feel safe and sharing in this, uh, shared decision-making process.
Thank you so much. Looks like you have about a minute left, so we'll move to your next question. How will you plan to recruit, hire, and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not ne- are, are not negatively impacted?
Oh, I have some wonderful ideas for that. Grow your own programs. My husband is a grow-your-own-program, um, individual. He was part of the local 343 plumber and welder for a number of years and transitioned four years ago to become the, the college, I'm sorry, the construction trades teacher at our juvenile detention facility and at Golden Hills Community School. So he was an individual in the community that people reached out to and said, you, you need to come, and we're going to help you get that credential. So he was able, with support and with a grant, to get his credential through the Solano County Office of Education, and now he's teaching, and he absolutely loves it. Best job that he says he's ever had. Also, there is a grant right now with so, with the state, the, uh, Golden State Teachers Grant. We need to make sure that community members are paraprofessionals, classified staff are knowledgeable, that the state will pay a good sizable portion of your, um, uh, degree to be able to be, to be able to teach. That's what I would do.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr. Uh, perfect timing. Uh, we'll now move to your, uh, two-minute, uh, closing statement, and your two minutes will start when you're ready.
Okay. So I'm running because I have a proven track record of being able to bring large projects and programs to our community. One of the biggest is our school-based wellness center initiative that I just opened with my leadership, fifty wellness centers in our county, fifty. Um, also, our mobile crisis, bringing together Solano County Behavioral Health, all of the different school districts, the police departments from within Solano County, to stand up a mobile crisis program that is the model for the state. We actually have state leaders coming next week to visit our mobile crisis program because they want to know, how did you do that? How did you bring all of these different groups together to lift up such a large program? And I want to target all of that knowledge and, and talent and time into my community. My priorities include student achievement. We have to focus on the academics. But as I said, making sure that we have different ways to measure their success, that we're focusing on college and career readiness, that we're offering different opportunities for you. Also, positive and safe school climate. Students don't want to attend schools where they don't feel safe and supported. So looking at bringing in evidence-based programming, like positive behavioral interventions and supports into every school in Fairfield. Parent and community engagement, I talked a little bit about that, but I definitely want to continue to, uh, implement engagement strategies that bring everyone together. And then finally, fiscal transparency. Um, I am overjoyed at having the opportunity to be here this evening at, uh, seven forty in the evening to answer these, uh, questions that really made me think. But I am definitely dedicated, and I would appreciate your endorsement on to be your endorsed candidate for, um, Fairfield Systems School Board, area seven. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parr. And again, like other candidates, feel free to drop in your website, email, contact information. So if our members have more questions, they'd be, uh, able to reach out to you directly, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move now to our next candidate on our list, um, Kai Yusebio. Kai, are you with us?
I am.
Okay, perfect. Let me pin you, uh, really quickly. And, okay, looks like you're good. So your two minutes for your introductory statement, uh, will start whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Well, good evening, fellow Solano County Young Dems. As you know, my name is Kai Yusebio, and I'm running for FSUSD Governing Board, trustee area seven. It's been a pleasure to get to know so many of you as your political director, as a community member, and in my role as a district representative for Assembly Member Lori Wilson. It is with joy that I seek your endorsement. Solano County Young Dems support and understand our youth's needs and democratic values in our region. Our club's efforts are crucial in getting those who engage and prioritize our youth into office. I'm sincerely thankful for all that we've done as a club and humbly ask for your support in joining my efforts to ensure that every student receives a quality education that prepares them for a successful future, as my community once did for me as a graduate of FSUSD schools. I ask that you join our team in my endeavors as the solely endorsed candidate by FSUD, our local teachers' union. I am the candidate who commits his democratic values and efforts to public service in his day job as your Assembly District Representative, utilizing my experiences working at the intersection of public policy and community service on the governing board. I pledge to work, uh, hard to foster a community where our students, parents, and educators are safe, successful, held accountable, and welcome to be and become themselves. I have the energy and experience to make a difference on the school governing board, and I humbly ask for our club to support me in ensuring student and educator's success, creating a safe learning environment, and fostering community engagement, all of which I've repeatedly heard from honor just, from our district stakeholders and in our community on the campaign trail. I have the California Bay Area Young Dems' nod to be endorsed and would be honored to have the endorsement of my fellow club members. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yusebio. Uh, we'll move to your question and answer portion, and we'll start with, uh, your first question. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students in schools? Your time will begin when your, when your response.
Well, I believe that standardized testing, um, as someone who's experienced that firsthand, um, isn't a full metric of student performance. I think nevertheless, it can be useful in just a general, uh, overview of how our students are performing. I can tell you that over the last, uh, roughly twelve years, uh, testing has been roughly stagnant here, uh, in FSUSD and, uh, has suffered under, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic. I think that is emblematic of our need as a district to improve educational outcomes. Yes, sure, for testing, but, uh, on a holistic, general level as well. Um, so my answer to that, of course, is yes, testing, uh, can't be the full representation of how students perform in our district, but it can be an important metric. I think to understand how well students are doing, we also have to look at, uh, how our students are performing socially and, and just feeling ingrained, uh, and giving feedback to, uh, those, uh, who are involved in our school district, I think is more important too, and, and giving, uh, students to show their knowledge and, and apply themselves in different avenues.
Thank you, Mr. Yusebio. We'll move to your next question now. If I didn't lose it, here it is. Um, what is your stance on charter schools?
Well, as you know, or may know, uh, FSUSD does not have any charter schools, and it is my desire to keep it that way. Uh, charter schools, uh, are sold as a way, uh, in theory, that, that offers, uh, innovation for, for schooling, right? To try different things and to do different things that would benefit, uh, our students. Um, we already do that here in FSUSD. We have a diverse set of programs, uh, college and career readiness programs, after-school programs, and themed schools. We have our Public Safety Academy. We have early college, high school, and more. Uh, so my stance on charter schools is I'm not for them. Uh, would not vote for any if by some virtue, uh, they do get through on the board through, of course, the, the governing board's approval. I would hope that, uh, it would be through dependent, it would be a dependent charter school, uh, instead of an independent charter school, so there is some accountability there. And I would hope that those charter schools, uh, would honor, uh, uh, union contracts.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yusebio. We'll now, we'll now move to your next question. Angela, what's the remaining time for candidate? A minute thirty-nine. Okay. Um, your next question is, how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the decisions made by the school board?
Cool. Love this question. Um, with regards to transparency and accountability, I believe that our school board needs to foster an environment that excels in that. Uh, in particular, our, uh, school board needs to be held accountable by being public and, and, and being there for the public in meeting our students' needs. Uh, an environment needs to be fostered by our meeting our students' needs. Uh, an environment needs to be fostered by our governing board to make sure that people in our community feel that they can engage and feel that they can express the needs that their student may need. Um, so working at the intersection of public policy in government and and community work, I have a unique insight into knowing how to implement that, you know, on a daily on a daily basis, I'm taking in uh cases for folks who need help in the community. And also applying my policy knowledge from the state legislature and through my education uh to be able to address that. So I think that not only do I practice uh that on a daily basis, it is something that I I can bring to the governing board with my experience.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yusebio. Um, Angelo, what's the remaining time for candidate? Thirty-five seconds. Hmm. I'll ask you, Mr. Yusebio, do you want another question or do you want to move to your um closing statement?
I'm happy for a quick question.
Sure. Best of luck answering this question. How will you plan to recruit, hire, and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not negatively impacted?
Okay, I'll do my best to answer that quickly. Uh, in short, we need to make sure that we partner uh with our frontline staff and make sure that they are valued and secured. Uh, and that they feel that they are involved and belong in our district process and governance. Uh, they are frontline staff. They need to be prioritized with stuff and need to be able to meet uh their their benefit package, the retirement package, uh needs to be able to meet uh the demands of what is the Bay Area in terms of living standards so that they can not only survive but thrive here in our community, right? They are our community members. FSUSD is the third largest employer here.
Thank you, Mr. Yusebio. Perfect timing, even though I had to cut you off. Um. We'll now move to your two-minute closing and your time for your closing will start when you're ready.
Okay, so. Thank you so much, Solano County Young Dems, for considering endorsing me. Know that there's a space here for you in this community and a space for you in my campaign. And it's wonderful to see all of you participate in our democratic process in this manner. So I, of course, am running for FSUSD Governing Board Trustee Area Seven. And it's because I want to see the next generation of our community members thrive, as was once afforded to me. Our community raised me in our public school classrooms by our educators and staff on campus. Parents, neighbors, and community members looked out for my well-being as a kid and ensured that I was safe on the playground and after-school programs. Our community ensured that I received a quality education, helped me become comfortable with who I am, and supported my dreams of attending college and being ready for my public service career. This school district, this home of ours, has thousands of stories like mine waiting to be realized and fulfilled. But only if we step up as a school board to invest in them. If I'm able to accomplish one thing, my dream is to give our kids and community the education and support they need to become themselves and thrive. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this process. I'll be sure to put my social media, uh ActBlue and website in the chat. And it's wonderful spending my Friday night here with you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yusebio. Um, yeah, feel free to share that information in the chat. We'll we'll get it out to the members. Uh, okay, we'll move to our next candidate. I want to thank the last two candidates. Uh, Trustee Patero and Trustee Kisses for waiting. Um, I I appreciate you uh and uh we will uh speed, not speed, but we'll get through your uh uh interviews. Uh, you are the last two here, so let me spotlight Trustee Patero. Um, okay, uh, Trustee Patero, any questions with regards to the process?
No questions.
No questions? Okay, well, uh, your two minutes for your introductory statement will begin when you are ready.
I am ready. Hello, young Dems. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and be among you. I am a teacher at Solano Community College. I've been teaching there since two thousand and one. Before that, I taught at Laney College in nineteen ninety-eight, and I taught students with learning disabilities, deaf students with learning disabilities. In two thousand sixteen, the last, I would say fifteen, twenty years, I've been noticing in my classes that students, when in the middle of the of the lecture, students would ask me, is this going to be in a test? Is this going to be in a test? And I started wondering, you know, why are students continually asking me if in the middle of a lecture, is this is the subject matter going to be in the test? And I started wondering, what are they teaching those students in K through twelve? So over the last few years, more and more students have been asking me, so I thought I better run for school board to see what's going on because I'm invested in education. As I got on the school board, I noticed that we are inundating our students in standardized testing. We have not only the state standardized test, we also have something called MAP testing. And MAP testing, as many of you students know, or of you young Dems know, were just students at FSUSD. I've asked many students who just graduated from FSUSD if standardized testing was effective and helped them with their education, and most of them said no. So for the last two year, four years, I have been advocating for getting rid of standardized testing, at least MAP testing. Also into the last two years, I've advocated for, and in one of our meetings, I actually suggested, because of a surplus in our budget that I asked for, to advocate for two million dollars to be reallocated to our CTE programs at Armory High School. And finally, I've also advocated for early college students to have breakfast. They were not served breakfast at early college high school at Solano. They had to go to Rodriguez to get breakfast. And so in the next four years, I'd like to continue to advocate for our students, and that's why I'm running again.
Thank you so much, Trustee Patero. Perfect timing, uh, as I would expect from a communications professor. Um, we'll now move to your question and answer portion, uh and we'll start with your first question. What is your stance on charter schools?
My stance on charter schools is I don't is I don't believe that charter schools are necessary. Charter schools to me is antithetical to the very notion and to the very spirit of Brown v. Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four. Brown v. Board of Education, the spirit of that was to integrate our schools. What charter schools don't do, unless you're LeBron James, LeBron James funds his own charter schools and he pays for all of those students when they graduate from high school, he pays for them to go to college. He's self-funded. Charter schools as we know it are public funds that is that is given to another entity with not ve- very little oversight. So I am vehemently against charter schools because I'm a huge proponent of public schools. Educate our students together and have them grow together because if we separate our children, students, one group is always going to be dependent on another group, not only in schools, but when they grow up to be adults. And that is that inequity is going to be carryover into adulthood, and that's why charter schools are antithetical to public education. Charter schools are antithetical to the very notion, to the very spirit of Brown v. Board of Education. I'm vehemently against charter schools.
Sorry. Thank you, Trustee Patero. Um, Angelo, could you put in the remaining time for uh Trustee Patero? And we'll move to your second question. What role do you think standardized testing should play in evaluating students in schools?
I have thought a lot about standardized testing. And what I've noticed is that if you look at, go all the way back to education, right? Education, all the way back, was not created for a hetero- heterogeneous, diverse community of students. When education first started, it was for white students, right? So that was a standard. And then we had all this funding into public schools. The more heterogeneous our public schools became, the less funding we got. And the more standardized testing and in in then intervention programs for our students. So standardized testing, I don't believe has any place nowadays in twenty twenty-four with our students. Many of our students have something called, and many of you young Dems know this because you were just out of high school, something called an IEP. Now, an IEP stands for an Individual Education, Individualized Education Plan. If our students have individual education plans and we tout the fact that our students have different learning styles, why do we have standardized testing? All of the candidates here had some aversion to standardized testing. And yet, why hasn't it been changed? Because we're not advocating enough for that. I've been on a board that spends two hundred thousand dollars a year since two thousand and sixteen on ineffective MAP testing. I had a a meeting with Dr. Sheila McCabe, who is the who is this, who is the Vice President of Student Edu- of Education Services. In that meeting a few years ago, I was told that there was on a three-year scale, a student went from twelve percent in MAP testing to twenty-seven percent. They're supposed to be above fifty percent. When I asked why the student wasn't go- wasn't getting higher, they didn't have an explanation. They said, well, he's improving. Well, three years of standardized testing to move from twelve percent to twenty-seven percent is unacceptable, especially not for two hundred thousand dollars. That two hundred thousand dollars can be al- reallocated to, say, sports or music or theater or art, where all of that is math. Music is math, right? Art, theater, that's math, that's communication, that's English, all of that. And that's and that's all, all of those pro- programs will help students develop and become more productive members of of society, better critical thinkings, rather than filling in a block, filling it in a a whatever, a bubble that they do now. So from what students have told me over the last few years and from what I've seen in the classroom, that's my data, right? Standardized testing is ineffective, and we need to do something that that on the state level, and we need to do something about it now. We keep talking about it and talking about it, but something has to be done. It's going to be the same until it's not. Right? And so that's why we need to be advocating, and this is where your generation comes in in terms of advocating, said this didn't help us in the in the past. We want school board members who represent us, who are going to advocate for eliminating standardized testing for the future, for your siblings and your future children.
Thank you so much, Trustee Patero, for that thoughtful response. We'll move now to your next question. How will you ensure transparency and accountability uh in the decisions made by the school board?
I have uh, I write op-eds, and I've been doing that for the last four years, informing the parent, informing uh the the public as to what's going on. I have a very uh involved communication staff, which I pay every every month, and they put on, put information out there that's going on in the community from my pages with my own personals uh Trustee logo. And I'm on the street every Friday. I'm out picking up trash. I see people, I talk to people. And also I attend events. In fact, right after this meeting, I'm going to go to the Rodriguez High School football game and and meet people and talk to them about what it is that their needs. I also attend back-to-school nights and hand out my 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 cards, and I have had parents contact me. I ensure that they do that.
Thank you so much, Trustee Patero. Uh, looks like we have less than ten seconds remaining, so we'll move, six seconds. We'll move to uh your closing statement. Again, that's two minutes, and your time uh starts when you are ready.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank you so much for inviting me to this very important um uh meeting, and I I really just want to thank you all for this opportunity. I'm a teacher. I teach students that what what the world looks like in twenty years will be be because of you. So what I've been doing in my in my class at Solano Community College, I see students who are interested in teaching. I hand them the cards of our of our HR Director at at Fairfield FSUD to recruit more teachers because I think that is so, so important. Another thing we need to do that I'd like to do when I run for the board again is to look at the in at all of the interventions that we have and redirect that funding to programs that will really help students improve in get involved and enjoy learning. Learning should not be a chore. You shouldn't go to school and go, you know, I don't want to go to school in the morning. I I don't want to go to school on Monday. Students should be excited about learning. I want to go to school the the next day. If you have students who don't want to go to school, these are students who are not going to want to go to work. So if we make student learning fun and so they can enjoy fun, enjoy education by redirecting funds to programs that are conducive to students' learning styles and fund those programs effectively, especially to our students, to our students of color who are not getting the resources that they need. And that's what's so important. If we can fund, re- redirect funds to help all of our students and not just some of our students, we can, we can really grow and educate and graduate students who are really career and college ready. And that's why I'm running, and that's why I'd like to in continue to engage our young people. Because like I said, what the world looks like in twenty years will be because of you, and I'm here to help advocate and support you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Trustee Patero. Feel free to put your contact information, so if members have further questions, they can contact you directly. And we'll move now to our last candidate. Um, I believe he is here, uh, Trustee Kisses. Michael, are you here?
There we go.
There you are. Perfect. So I just uh pinned you for everyone, so uh your two minutes for your introductory statement will begin uh when you are ready.
Well, I'm going to do my best to be as real as possible. You guys have listened to a lot of people tonight. Um. I am, I have been a Democrat for forty-seven years. Um. I have uh, I have twenty-six years at Solano County Mental Health. I am the senior manager over the three children outpatient clinics in Vacaville, Fairfield, and Vallejo. Um, I have been on the Vacaville School Board for over twenty years, five terms uh successfully, and I decided to run for a sixth because number one, it was really important to get this bond that we're doing now to be passed. Um, this bond's really important. It's a three hundred seventeen million dollar bond. The kind of hallmark of the bond is going to be a new middle school. Um, this was a really innovative idea, actually, and not not necessarily that new. But we have uh Vacaville, unlike some other school districts, have been growing. So we continue to grow. We have a lot of uh impacts, impaction in our uh elementary schools. So, you know, we thought it's very expensive to build schools these days. The state's not very supportive. They're not giving much money like they used to. So, and it's difficult to get because they haven't really done very much on school bonds. So we're going to build a new middle school, and we're going to actually take the sixth grade and move the sixth grade into all the middle schools. And that's gonna um make a lot of space in the uh in the elementary schools. So that's going to solve our impaction problem. And what we're going to do is we're going to make very, we're going to be very careful because sixth grade's kind of a tender age. We're missing the seventh, mixing with seventh and eighth graders, and I think everybody knows how seventh and eighth graders can be. So anyway, that's my beginning.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kisses. Uh, we'll now move to your five-minute question and answer uh portion. Uh, and so we'll start with your first question. How will you plan to recruit, hire, and retain the necessary staff so that the education of students are not negatively impacted?
Well, that's pretty darn difficult these days. Um. We had our uh Vacaville Teacher Association President come a couple of meetings ago, and one of the things she was talking about was we have had a fifteen percent uh turnover in teachers over the last year, and that is very common for school districts because a lot of teachers are aging out. They're leaving. And one of the biggest problems actually is uh teachers who are zero to five years, who aren't experienced, they don't have a lot of uh uh kind of battle-testedness, are leaving the profession. So that's really a big deal. So we're we're going to try to put a lot of energy into our teachers uh from zero to five years, try to make them feel comfortable, try to make them feel supported. And try, and you know, Vacaville Unified is a really good place to be. And wha- wha- what that, what what a result is that of that is that we have a tremendous amount of Vacaville natives who are teachers in our district.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We'll now move to your next question. Uh, you have just under four minutes left. Uh, how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the decisions made by the school board?
Well. Every school board is required to follow the Brown Act, which is all government agencies are are have to do that except the legislature, actually, which is interesting, who made the law. They don't have to follow the Brown Act. And the Brown Act basically means that you can, so we have seven trustees on our on our board. So you can, I cannot talk to two uh more than two other trustees about anything that we're going to be voting on or have have anything to do with uh uh that may come up in the future to vote on. So that's a way to make sure that all the re- the the important discussion happens in front of the public. So you know, I I've been around twenty years. People have my number. People see me in the street. They see me in the grocery store. They know that I am interested in the, I have the best interest of the kids, not any kind of um general ideology. It's about kind of supporting our our students.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to your next. Thank you so much. We'll now move to your next question. How will you prioritize spending, and what areas do you believe need more investment or reallocation of resources?
Well, you know, it's been a very interesting time, because after COVID, we got a lot of one-time money. It's part of the the ARPA, which came from the federal government, came down from the state. And we had a lot of money for after-school programs for, there's a lot of money for arts and things. And, you know, what we're trying to do, we're we're in pretty good fiscal shape, but everybody's going to be struggling the next couple of years with the major budget deficits in the state. It's going to come down to us. So we're trying to retain as many of the temporary positions we've had. We spent a lot of money on coordinators that help with reading and math in the schools, especially the elementary schools, because kids really did fall behind during COVID. So that, so so kind of ramping up and making sure that kids are where they need to be at this point is is probably the biggest priority.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to your next question. How would you promote civic education and engagement amongst students in the district?
Well, I think that there's a real push for that these days. The 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 tenor of the conversation in the 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 national conversation with politics is really horrible. So it's really important that kids, students, get to really be able to learn about civics and learn about having productive conversations. You know, the second thing that I wrote in my candidate's statement was, you know, in our district particularly, Vacaville is an interesting district. It's got like conservative and it's got progressive. And people came out, there was a small group that came out intensely against masks and against vaccines and all that kind of stuff, and we had to manage the school board meetings and we had to manage everything that came at us. So I want to take a lot of time to really listen to people, to have conversations that are free of emotion and free of blame and judgment, because we're all obviously in this district together.
Thank you so much. I think you can answer at least one more question. What is your approach to handling contentious issues such as curriculum changes, particularly in areas like history or sexual education?
We try to, we try to give as much transparent. We try to be as transparent as we can with the 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 community and with students. We haven't really had that my that many issues with sex education. We had, we introduced an ethnic studies class a couple of years ago. It's actually been very popular. Originally, people were very, some people were very worried about it, like we were going to be brainwashing their kids, but it's been a really great class. I've been to it myself, and the the conversations among students is really great.
That's awesome to hear. As someone who worked on passing that legislation, that's I'm glad that's that's happening in Vacaville. Moving to your closing statement, you have two minutes, and your time starts when you're ready.
I think the most interesting thing to me is just as I listen to people who are, you know, running for office and and getting going for the first time. I remember back in 2003, which was maybe around when some of you folks were born. And there you go. That was my first time running for the school board, and I realized that I really didn't know anything. I thought I knew something, but I really didn't know anything. School finances are very complicated. The way we allocate money is very complicated. The way we receive money from the federal government, from the state government, from local stuff is very complicated. So I think there's, over time, there's a certain kind of humility that is necessary, because as a school board member, you're one of seven. Okay, some districts have five, but we're one of seven, and you really have no particular power on your own. You have to come together with three other people in order to make a decision to move the district forward. So it's really important to, we have a very functional board. And we didn't always, but we have a very functional board, and that's because, you know, I've been there for twenty years. I understand what it takes to have conversations that are difficult yet not hate somebody or not kind of think that they're doing something that's so horrible. So it's just really important to have conversations and transparency. We hired a, we hired our superintendent who's been around for twenty years, and he's great. I I just really think that Vacaville Unified is on the right track and is going to move forward really well in the future.
Thank you so much, Trustee Kitzes, and best of luck to all of our candidates. And thank you all for taking time out of your Friday night to come out and interview with us. Feel free, if you haven't already, drop the information in chat. We'd be happy to provide that out to our our general membership. But let me pause the recording.